... from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, we're missing Jeff Blair. Are there any changes, adding or deletion to the agenda?
I'll second.
We got a motion to approve the agenda in a second. All in favor, singling by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Passed with all present. Approve minutes from August fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
I would make a motion for approval of the minutes of the August meeting.
I'll second that.
We got a motion to approve the minutes from August fifteenth in a second. All in favor, singling by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Passed with all present. Approve minutes from September eleventh.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September eleventh meeting.
I'll second that.
We got a motion to approve from September eleventh in a second. All in favor, singling by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Passed with all present. Notice of public hearing. The Way Park Plan Commission will hold a public hearing at City Hall, Nineteen Thirteenth Avenue North at six thirty PM or soon thereafter Tuesday, November thirteenth, twenty eighteen, to hear the following request. Request of Edward R. Mulcher and Brenda L. Mulcher and Rockon Properties Incorporated for review of preliminary and final plat, a Mulcher Industrial Park plat two. The property is legally described as Lot One and Lot Two, Mulcher Industrial Park, and that part of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section Nineteen, Township One Twenty Four, Range Twenty Eight West, Stearns County, Minnesota, lying northerly of the Brings Storm Industrial Park, according to the record of plat thereof, and lying northerly of Rockon Properties, according to the recorded plat thereof, and lying southerly of the Saint Cloud Cold Storage, according to the recorded plat thereof. You are welcome to attend the public hearing and submit written comments pertaining to the request. Public hearing opened at six thirty-two.
Chair Jansky, Plan Commission members, those in the audience or watching at home, either now or later, as noted, this is a fairly straightforward preliminary and final plat review. Creates a three lot, single block subdivision, and also a partial replat of the current Mulcher Industrial Park plat between the Mulcher properties and Rockon properties on Seventh Street South and Twenty-Eighth Avenue South. On the screen is a line of the two properties in question. The reason for the request is a pending arrangement for one property in order to buy a small portion of property from another, but the way it's set up, the portion that is looking to be transferred is too small to basically split off with a lot split, which would be probably the easier way to do it, and so it would have to be platted instead. The total area is fourteen point two-two acres. No specific development or construction with the plat at this time, at least more of a mechanism to achieve the property transfer. They're also looking at correcting some easement issues that were noted during the survey and plat design process. That's handled separately. That goes right to the City Council, doesn't get reviewed by the Planning Commission, but we'll take that to the Council with this request if at all possible. One recommendation that did come up during the review by the city engineer, there is a, there will be an easement that runs north and south. You can see there between the three parcels. It was recommended to increase that drainage easement to a total thirty-foot width, fifteen feet on other side of the property to allow for drainage, excuse me, additional drainage for property to the north, to Seventh Street South. Since the portion of the property that's not been platted, that would require the payment in lieu of parkland dedication. We have not reviewed that with the park board as of yet, but we'll have to have that completed before it goes to the City Council. Based on the established value of the unplanted portion that's owned by Rockon, and that's just the land, not including the buildings, and per the value, according to the assessor's office, and taking five percent of that, per our ordinance, the suggested payment in lieu of parkland dedication would be fourteen thousand seven hundred ten dollars. But again, that's subject to review and approval by the park board and council. I don't have any issues with the preliminary and final plats. Given their area, they don't require review by the Stearns County Highway Department, as we don't have any county frontage there. So I'd recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions. One, the property is subject to a requirement for payment in lieu of parkland dedication, as recommended by park board and established by City Council. Any parkland dedication fees must be paid prior to a fixing of city signatures upon the plat. And number two, the proposed drainage and utility easement running north and south between Lot One and Lots Two and Three shall be expanded to a thirty-foot total width, fifteen-foot either side of the property boundary. Provided that those conditions are satisfied, I'd recommend approval of the final plat as well.
Thank you, John. It is a public hearing. Anybody want to speak for or against, put in a comment?
Close the public hearing.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion, a second to close public hearing. All in favor, singling by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Public hearing closed at six thirty-seven.
I guess I'll ask this question, I think I do every time, and I never remember which way you want it. Do you want the preliminary plat handled separate of the final plat?
They can be done together.
They can be done together.
Yep.
There being no issues with regard to this and no opposition to it, I would recommend approval of the proposal with the conditions as stated.
I'll second that.
We got a motion to approve with conditions in a second. All in favor, singling by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Passed with all present. The Way Park Plan Commission will hold a public hearing at City Hall, Nineteen Thirteenth Avenue North at six thirty PM or soon thereafter Tuesday, November thirteenth, twenty eighteen, to hear the following request. Request of MTL Partners and Johnson Minerals Incorporated for the interim use permit extractive use and mining to remove granite in an A-one agricultural residential district, and for the variance from ordinance Section Fifty-Two Point Four-Five subdivision five to allow mining within thirty feet of public right-of-way. The property is legally described as section of the southeast quarter of Section Twenty-Nine, Township One Twenty Four, Range Twenty Eight, lying northwestfully of Highway Fifteen less and accepting certain areas, Stearns County, Minnesota. You are welcome to attend the public hearing or submit written comments pertaining to the request. Public hearing opened at six forty.
Thank you, Chair Jansky. Again, I've got the subject property on the screen here for anyone in the audience or at home. This property is located adjacent to Granite View Road, to the west of Highway Fifteen, kind of in the southeastern area of town, north of the roundabouts is probably the most easily recognizable area. Again, this is a request for an interim use permit, which would have an expiration date and a variance to allow mining within thirty feet of the public right-of-way. This property is zone A-one rural, agricultural, rural residential, so mining is considered a potential use in that area, according to ordinance. Just to give a little background, the applicants have been coordinating with city staff since earlier this year when we were approached regarding the feasibility and viability of this project. Their intent would be to mine the area on a couple of significant granite outcroppings for use for a planned reconstruction project within the region. No crushing onsite, but taking it out and doing the crushing component elsewhere, although that was a discussion point early on, but the end proposal does not include any crushing onsite. As a result of the mining, the end-use reclamation plan would remove the granite outcroppings that are a little bit of an issue right now for any potential development, because it 'd have to be worked around or removed at cost to the developer. It would make the property more marketable and developable by taking that out of the equation and hopefully further development in that area after reclamation. I do believe that this is a potentially beneficial arrangement by which the granite could be removed and results in a potentially more shovel-ready parcel. The property owners have marketed the property for a few years, and they've had some designs which have aligned pretty nicely with the city's vision for the area, but the interest has been somewhat limited due to the presence of those outcroppings and the distance of the connections to existing city utilities in the north. I believe that removing that outcropping issue would take one of those significant barriers out of the mix and allow for a better design and more extensive eventual permanent development at the end of the process. The total of the proposed areas for mining is relatively small for the site, at six and a half acres, but it's estimated to contain about two hundred some thousand cubic yards of granite, as well as sixty-four thousand cubic yards of overburden. There are two primary sites located with the plans. I'll scroll to those now for anyone that has not seen it or did not receive a notice. You can see the Site A, oops, excuse me, more to the north, and quarry site B closer to the teardrop-shaped parcel is before you make that final turn into the roundabout area. The intent is that the first site would take between one and three years to complete with pending and approval work would be projected to begin in March of twenty nineteen. After that, the mining would then move to the secondary Site B. I would recommend that the initial interim use permit term be limited to five years. That would not include the year that's allowed for reclamation afterwards. That would just be limiting the active mining, but that could be extended with additional review approval if needed after that time, assuming that they've complied with the conditions of approval and that there haven't been any unaddressed or unresolved concerns or problems. I enclosed a copy of the narrative and information that was submitted by the applicants. The intent was for daytime operation only six AM to six PM with no processing onsite, as I mentioned earlier. We've had several discussions with the applicant regarding the trucking of the material out on the site in order to minimize impact to Granite View Road. As you're probably aware, that's recently, relatively recently been improved and is not generally designed for heavy truck traffic. We've had discussions with the city engineer and public works director on that, and they're confident that there's a reasonable plan that can be executed there. As a condition of approval, we would recommend that a formal circulation plan be submitted for review and approval. As part of our standard review process, it did come up that it was suggested we forward this plan and narrative to our consultant that's done some mining review for us, especially with Martin Marietta, and he's our technical consultant, Bill Welbus, who has performed analysis and monitoring tasks for the city associated with the other quarries in town. He's had a chance to give feedback, and I incorporated some of his suggestions into the conditions, which I'll get into at the end of the presentation here, but he didn't have any serious concerns with the proposal, but suggested some kind of standard language and a little bit of additional conditions, being it's so close to the Highway Fifteen and Granite View Road there, but nothing that shouldn't be insurmountable. As of today, I hadn't, I've not received any concerns from neighbors or any adjacent property owners. I did have one call this afternoon, but it was more curiosity, no objection, but just kind of asking about the project and looking for a little more detail. As far as the variance request, the request is to allow mining within the thirty feet of public right-of-way. The intent of the ordinance is to limit and prevent impact to adjacent right-of-way. There was some discussion between city staff and the applicants as to whether mining would potentially be allowed within the right-of-way itself, since if it lined up well with our need to maybe prepare for putting utilities in, there might have been some mutual benefit there. But just due to the uncertainty as to when that would occur, we decided that it would be best just to forego any of that proposal and any work in the actual right-of-way itself. The parcel has a large, one of the large granite outcroppings is within that thirty-foot setback and would be problematic for the eventual end-use development. If we don't take it out when the opportunity is here, it's just going to be very problematic in the future. It doesn't make any sense in this context to forego that. It's just going to be a literal roadblock at some point. I believe it would be appropriate for long-term development to allow this and to reduce the required setback to zero feet from right-of-way, provided that we have some conditions that mitigate any potential impact from the right-of-way area, and I believe we've got a pretty substantial set of conditions that will safeguard our interests there. I do believe that practical difficulty exists in this case due to the existing granite conditions and that not extracting them when otherwise mobilized and feasible would hinder the development of the property, as we would otherwise not be able to work around them very well. At this time, I would recommend approval of the condition, or excuse me, interim use permit with the conditions, as I'll go through shortly. I do also recommend approval of the variance as submitted, but because these are two separate actions, we should have a separate motion for each when we get that far. I typically read out the recommended approval conditions, and these are pretty extensive, so I will go through them point by point. I apologize if it's going to take a little bit. Number one, the proposed use is subject to all provisions of city ordinance Section Fifty-Two, mining and extractive uses. Number two, interim use permit for mining shall terminate April first, twenty twenty-four. All mining activity must cease at that time. Reclamation activities shall be complete by April first, twenty twenty-five. Renewal may occur subject to processes established by city ordinance Section Fifty-Two. No tacit or inferred approval of renewal is established by granting of initial interim use permit. Number three, hours of operation are limited to Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM. Number four, no explosives shall be stored onsite. Number five, no crushing or washing activity shall occur onsite. Number six, security fencing of six-foot height shall be required to be installed along eastern property line to prevent trespass from Granite View Road. Number seven, birmingham of sufficient height to shield view of operations from adjacent properties and roadways shall be established immediately upon project commencement and be in place by July first, twenty nineteen. Number eight, applicant shall be responsible for any repair costs associated with any verified settlement or damage to adjacent paved streets or roadways due to blasting and mining activities as determined by city staff or city consultants. Number nine, a pit development plan shall be submitted for review and approval, including information on proposed number and location of blasts and depths of blasting. Number ten, applicant and/or blasting contractor shall maintain minimum of three seismic air pressure monitoring locations surrounding site to document blast impacts. Particle velocities are no more than point two-five inches per second, and one hundred thirty-four decibels as measured on an adjacent property shall be maintained. Number eleven, a proposed annual estimated blasting schedule shall be submitted to City of Way Park annually by March first. Number twelve, applicant shall maintain records of each blasting event for later inspection if required. Records shall include date, location onsite, blast seismic data, number of holes, depth of holes, and pounds of explosive per hole. Number thirteen, applicant bears responsibility for any damages and/or injuries associated with any fly rock leaving property limits resulting from blasting events. Number fourteen, applicant shall submit plan for review approval to city as to how above conditions number eight through thirteen will be managed and complied with. Number fifteen, mined areas shall adhere to those as identified by the submitted plans. Number sixteen, a stormwater pollution prevention plan shall be submitted for review and approval and adhered to accordingly. Washer racks or grates shall be implemented onsite for all ingress egress points as part of the plan to limit tracking of debris off property. Number seventeen, a traffic circulation plan shall be developed and submitted for review approval of city staff. Upon approval, it shall be adhered to accordingly. Number eighteen, any debris tracked off property and into public right-of-way shall be removed by the applicant immediately upon notice. Number nineteen, the applicant is responsible for securing any additional city, county, or state permitting requirements, including but not limited to requirements for environmental assessment worksheet, DNR de-watering permit, and blasting licensing or activity requirements. Number twenty, applicant agrees that City of Way Park staff shall be allowed access to the site as required per ordinance and outlined in subject, excuse me, submitted project narrative. Number twenty-one, reclamation and backfilling of site shall be completed using only clean, compatible, fill-free of debris or contamination. No construction debris, petroleum, chemically impacted soils, demolition debris or waste. Paving materials or other materials shall be used for reclamation or backfilling. Number twenty-two, applicant shall maintain and provide record to city on dates, volume, and sources of any fill brought into site for reclamation. Number twenty-three, a performance bond shall be required in the amount of three hundred fifty thousand dollars to ensure reclamation. Bond shall be submitted prior to commencement of any activity. Lastly, number twenty-four, failure to abide by any terms or conditions set forth in this interim use permit and/or applicable city ordinance or state of Minnesota law or statute shall be grounds for revocation of interim use permit. These are, again, fairly extensive conditions modeled after other, both modeled after other facilities in town that have worked pretty successfully, but also with input of our city consultant. But with those conditions in mind, I would recommend approval of the interim use permit as outlined.
Talk about the variance before we close the public hearing and then do them separately?
I have, I recommend approval of the variance, but there's no specific conditions of approval with that.
Okay, it is a public hearing. Anybody want to speak in favor or against? Any comments? You could step up to the podium, please. State your name and address.
Hi, Ralph Fedor, Two Three Three Seven Granite View Road. I really have no objection to the project. I would just like to get a little information on the table if I could. If this lectern is the granite outcropping, sticking up above the soil surface, and this is the granite that's down below, and the soil is here, so you've got two feet, you know, from the top of the soil down to the granite ledge, is there a specific depth to which you are going to go below the surface, or you're just going to grind the outcropping off?
I think I would rather allow the applicant and/or property owners to respond to your question, since they're going to have more specific detail on their specific plans.
Are they present?
Yes.
It's hard to see on these maps, but we go about, we're going to strip the, this is the outcropping here.
Right.
And then this is covered by soil, topsoil and sand underneath of that. That will be stripped down to about twenty feet below the existing surface, and then this will all be filled back in.
Is there, is there any thought about providing a corridor through there for utilities to come in?
We had discussed that at some point earlier on with our other city staff, but just due to the unknowns, that we don't know when that's going to come in, and it may be a couple years, it may be ten. If anything, we hope that if this goes forward and opens, kind of makes this property a little more developable, it'd be on the nearer term than that, but right now, the consensus was it didn't make sense for us to really do anything with the utilities at the same time, just because there's too many unknowns.
Okay.
But it was considered, and the applicant did open that up for discussion with us.
You know, it would seem like if you're going to do something, now would be the time to do it.
Yeah.
Kind of in one fell swoop.
Yeah, you know, in a perfect world, we would do that, but we just don't know how it's going to go.
Sure. So you'll kind of make this up as we go along, so if you see a need to put a twenty-foot deep corridor through there, and it's feasible, you would probably just do it?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to take that as the plans come, but nothing to say that, you know, we may get a couple years along, and they may still be actively working on the site, and there might be a proposal there, and maybe we revisit that discussion. I mean, if there's any way to not have to go on and redig and re-impact it, it only makes sense, but right now, we just don't know what's going to happen, so we, we're not planning on anything with that right now.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm one of the partners of MTL Partnership. I just wanted to speak up regarding to the piece that we have there. We got a couple of the outcroppings that have been a little bit of a hardship for us, and we really feel that. What we're going to do is going to make this corridor connection down there much more viable for marketing and developing, so I think approving this will allow us to get us to be marketing that property fully developed and enriched for the city of Way Park. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or concerns they'd like to bring up tonight?
Move we close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
We got a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, singling by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Public hearing closed at six fifty-eight.
I'll make a motion that we approve the interim use permit with the conditions set forth. I'll second that motion.
We got a motion to approve with conditions as listed, and a second. All in favor, singling by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Passed with all present. Variants.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of that variance application.
Second that.
Second that.
With the
With the twenty-four conditions, isn't it?
Four.
Oh, that's that part with four, sorry, excuse me, four conditions on that one.
We got a motion and a second to approve the variance, all in favor, single by saying aye.
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 All same sign, pass with all present. Any other business?
I don't have anything additional this evening, but to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, John, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to you as well.
I get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
We got a motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven o'clock.